Ending with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda confirmation, do we have any corrections, additions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to add an agenda item, it's just for informational purposes for the board, coming from Cody Piper, EDA, he just wants to inform the board of a grant opportunity for childcare facilities. You can put it, if you'd like to, you can just put it under me, so you don't have to add another, another person.
Okay, any other? additions, corrections? Hearing on all the paper?
Motion to approve the grant.
I'll second.
Or motion to approve the-
Motion is second now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I was just getting ahead of myself. Minutes from the September seventeenth meeting. Any corrections?
I did not have any.
I didn't have any either. That's like two weeks in a row.
There is an extra space behind a comment.
With the online was absent, so I didn't-
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from-
Motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Erica, further discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, is anything in, that somebody wants to pull for further discussion?
Just a note, I think the, the change in there was for the Dunton Locks Shelter, we increased it to $200, and 100 of that is refundable, I think that was the-
That's correct.
Change in that, so. Think that's appropriate with the new shelter coming up.
Yeah.
Give a little bit.
With that, motion to approve the consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Barry, second by Erica. Further discussion? Hearing on all the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, open form. We have Doug, just come up, state your name, address, and try to limit to three to five minutes in there.
Douglas Sage, I live on Toad Lake, I have Bambi Resort. No, okay. Douglas Sage, Bambi Resort, Toad Lake. I'm here to speak on this resolution for Toad Mountain. I think it's important to remember that the reason, you know, that it was put to bed last time wasn't just because of the master plan, it was because of the ongoing expense and the liability that the county would, would take on. And so, you know, it's wonderful that somebody wants to donate money, but they sure don't need the county to do this. You know, if they, if they have a nonprofit, you know, I see on here, you know, they want to have a healing center, stuff like that, that's great, there's all kinds of nonprofits that can raise money to do that. And I really don't believe it's in the county's best interest to take on this responsibility. Thank you.
Roxanne?
I'm here also about the Toad Mountain project, my questions are, are you-
State your name and address.
Oh, my name's Roxanne Zick, I live on the west shore of Big Toad Lake, at 20997 West Lake Tour. Anyway, I'm wondering if the money, this $250 grant is guaranteed, that's one of my questions. The other one is, why, I just don't understand why the county wants to take that property off the tax roll. Because that would be indicative that the people in that, it would be just more for the people in this area. And, you know, does the county really need another park? That's my question.
Thank you. Dave Schlossman?
This is David Schlossman from Fargo, just wanted to publicly thank this, this donor. When I received a call to hear about it, I was kind of shocked, it was completely unsolicited. And it just goes to show, there is public interest, you know, beyond the open house we had, which is overwhelmingly positive based on the surveys. And we ran into the restraints with, with the grant and the Parks and Recs Fund, you know, taking that on. Now we've kind of overcome that hurdle as well, so hoping, hoping you guys will reconsider this, thank you.
Jase? Jase Engelstedt?
Yep, this is Jase Engelstedt from Fargo as well, just working on this. But yeah, just very similar as, you know, David said, just want to publicly thank and bottom our hearts to the donor. And just the care, and I think she represents a lot of voices, and the way they feel about this project and, I mean, just, you know, the people that, as I said before, that were able to go up and experience and this, you know, the reaction on their face was just quite incredible on so many different avenues, you know, and this, and, you know, just, it just shows that clearly I think this donor had, had been able to experience this mountain and this land, and she felt so passionately, or he or she, you know, felt so passionately about this that, you know, they wanted to go to this extent, and I think that just speaks for a lot of people that know about this property, so, thank you.
Mr. Knudsen?
Back again? Larry Knudsen, Toad Lake. The motion that you made at your last meeting was pretty direct. Discontinue our pursuit and purchase of the Toad Mountain, well now here we are back again. It didn't say anything if, it didn't say if we get a donation, if we get a donor, if we get a grant, it says discontinue our pursuit and purchase of Toad Mountain. My problem is, sometimes I know too much, if that's possible. But in 2024, your levy was 5.96%, which was the highest in 14 years. Now this year, your proposed levy is seven and a half percent, which dwarfed the 5.96%. Now it's the highest in 15 years. I don't think the county is in any position at all to spend any money on projects that have no end result or any, no cost involved in the, in the final project. The resolution is really not clear, it dictates, it starts, it immediately starts dictating, like the name of the property, what will be done on that property. I don't know that a $50,000 donation on a project of this size should be in the, in the, any position to dictate anything. I think the taxpayers who's going to have the biggest involvement maybe should have more input into that. The, again, we've talked about the property, the uniqueness of the property. The DNR already owns hundreds of feet of lake shore on Toad Lake and several acres. I don't think that government should be involved in buying any more taxable property, as I've spoken before, thank you.
Thanks. Karen Daggett, you want to speak? Willis?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Willis Matson, live out by, on Toad Lake. Want to speak to both issues, the Toad Mountain and the wake boat issue on the comp plan. First of all, in investigating the concerns people have about the increase in taxes, it's interesting to note that from the county staff, that the increase in taxes distributed again countywide, if that property removed from the rolls, on a $400,000 house would be about $4 increase. And for the township, I've not heard the calculation, but I would imagine it would be another buck or two. And as a township resident, I'm more than happy to contribute that amount to the public good. The concerns about maintenance are legitimate based on the infrastructure that was proposed on the map, because it was pretty heavily developed for an active recreation kind of facility. What's being proposed as an alternative is a very passive recreation facility that does not require any more infrastructure than it's already there, other than possibly designated where the parkings are and some signage, and then routine mowing and that kind of thing. Much of which could be taken care of by volunteers, there already people have stepped up to volunteer in what would become Friends of Toad Mountain. Much the same as what's done with the North Country Trail, or with Tamrac National Wildlife Refuge. So many of those concerns, I think, can be allayed, they don't go away completely, but certainly they're not overwhelming as some have presented. The other matter of speaking to is the wake boat and wake surfing issue. The advocates of doing something about that problem have followed the county procedure now and have gone through the Sheriff's Committee, answered the questions there in that committee, and Mr. Meyer may have some further information on his report, but I don't believe there was any action required from that committee, it was just to, to clear up the questions. And the next action would be to include some suggested language in the comp plan that opens the door to allowing a lake association or township or city to come forward and go through the DNR process for adopting an ordinance for a specific lake. So to make that possible or facilitated, there should be language in the comp plan that says that that's how any proposal for control on wake boats would come forward and the counting of process, it would be followed in order to get to a point where a lake association or township wanted to be in, in addressing that, so we hope that that then will appear. It, the matter had not gone through the committee before the latest revision of the comp plan went out for public notice and is going to go to hearing next week, so we'd hope that in the interim, at least at the hearing, it would be announced that some language has been added to deal with, with that, so the people know at the time of the hearing how the county's going to deal with wake boats, so be happy to answer any questions that any of the board members have on any of those topics.
I don't know a question, but I'm pretty sure your numbers are wrong, I don't think it's going to cost a $400,000 home $4, or our taxes would really be astronomical on, on that, but countywide.
That was this number given to me by Steve Skugan, so-
I think you probably, I think you two crossed, crossed wires somewhere, because of-
I'm not the expert in that, I asked Steve Skugan, that's the number he quoted for me, so he does have more experience in that than I-
Well, if it raises my taxes $4 on a $400,000 home, everyone, I think then we should vote no, because that's not, that's, that's exorbitant number.
I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online that want to speak, I did have a call from Clark Lee, you online, Clark, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clark Lee, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Clark Lee, I live at 20552 County Road 117, east side of Big Toad Lake. And thank you for the opportunity to address the commissioners this morning. In addition to echoing what's been said by the people that are opposed to this resolution, I would like to point out that I am very appreciative that when the motion was actually recorded in the minutes that you've just approved, that that was very specific, it didn't just say motion was made and carried, it specifically said the motion was made to reject all service providers, authors, and bids, including SRF, and discontinue our, meaning Becker County, pursuit of the purchase of Toad Mountain. That is what was passed at the September seventeenth meeting, and that is what the commissioner should hold fast to. If you look at the resolution, first of all, the resolution shouldn't, in my opinion, even have been on the agenda, because when it was brought to the county, it should have been said, the commissioners have already voted on this. The second thing is, if you look at the actual resolution, the second whereas, all it talks about is that they're, they're making this contribution, she is making this contribution, to allow a master plan, and again, it wasn't just the master plan, it was all aspects of master plan, getting it opened up, continuing to run it, the repairs to the cabins and so forth and so on. And once again, the wishes of the township and the taxpayers, with the exception of the two or three or four people that are pushing this thing, are being ignored. And on that basis, I would ask that you, as commissioners, stick to the motion that you made and unanimously passed at the September seventeenth meeting, and vote no today on this resolution, thank you, any question?
No. Thanks, Clark.
Thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else online that wants to speak to open forum? Anyone else? Hearing on closed, open forum. Moving on to reports and correspondence, who wants to lead off?
I can lead off, I had a Mahoubi meeting, we went over their community needs assessment, a couple of things that came out of there was a couple of needs that stuck out were housing and healthcare, specifically in dental for the residents, that the community needs assessment was done by those that are served by Mahoubi. Also, just, energy assistance applications are out so far for this year, Mahoubi has received 1,955 applicants, now that is for the, well, I think there is our five counties served by Mahoubi. Going off of the healthcare dental, I was not able to attend the meeting, but I did receive information for the dental access. Detroit Lakes opened their outreach clinic, it opened on September 5th, they've been open for four days so far in September, and they've served 76 patients, so I think it's, it goes to show how much of a need really for, for dental care in, in Becker County. They're hoping to be able to continue to use the Essentia building through the end of December, and then they hope to identify another site in January of 2025. Then I just had my EDA meeting where we just really discussed housing updates, talked about a possible program that would come for housing. That's it. Oh, and we had our benefits committee, but we have that-
Yeah, Eric and I were at the benefits committee and, and have some recommendations coming to the board. I was at Lakeland Mental, had a Lakeland Mental Health meeting, and again, we discussed that, the volleyball game for Lake, or for public awareness of mental health, it went very well, and, and we had our meeting in Detroit Lakes. The Moorhead Building is on schedule, I think our next meeting next month will be at, at Moorhead. I'm sure they'll have an open house for that new facility, looking good. We are doing very, very well financially, except for psychology, psychiatrist is a, is, we are, that's the biggest, and that's always been and the hardest one to, to break even with, but it's a service that's needed to, to, to stay within mental health business, so we are continuing, changing the, how we're providing that, whether it's in-person or online, so. Sunnyside, we had Sunnyside Care Center meeting, our year end ends the end of September, and our year-to-date bottom line is 175,000 to the positive, so a very good, very good year for Sunnyside. We're near capacity all the time, so, and I, and I credit this to the leadership at Sunnyside and the employees, they are very well received, and, and our management group now, Mini Waska, is doing a great job, and they were there at our meeting.
Yeah, we got to meet them in person for the first time.
Well, not first time, but-
When did we meet them?
We met them when, when we were discussing the transfer early.
Oh yeah, that's right, that's right, did we meet Josh though? I don't-
Yeah.
Was he there the first time? It's been over a year.
Anything else to add to Sunnyside?
Just one thing that, they are, they're having a nurse, a night nurse retire, and they are already found a replacement, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a great place to work, and, and they're near full staff, I think they have one part-time position that's open, so. It's great to see that full staff. Had extension. We had Bob Ryan's as the interim, I don't, everyone knows Bob, he's been, been around for many years. Cecilia's on maternity leave, we had a couple speakers from University of Minnesota. Ryan Pesky, he's the egg business, and he's, he's out of Pelican, and he has his own, he does some farming too, organic farming too. And Fernando, Fernando, I'm not going to-
Fernando.
I'm not going to attempt the last name, Mary, do you want to try it? They gave a presentation very well, got some numbers, the, the 4H numbers are all looking positive, you know, real good and, and strong, so it looks good. Sheriff's-
Fernando was the one that did our EDA shop upstairs.
Yeah, I suggest he run up or touch base with you guys. I think the, most of the sheriff's items are on the agenda. Again, I won't go into that for the intended sheriff's meeting, and natural resources. Dunton Locks, the shelter, the grant, or the new, new buildings going up, and we're going to look at the septic system, seeing what, what we need there. We did raise the rates to $200 with $100 refundable on the new facility. Had a request to update the signage out there, because some of that old historical signage is, is getting, so you can't read it. DNR is looking at pulling that concrete and that rebar out of the Osage Swimming Beach, this fall or next spring. I know Richard offered to pull that himself, but no one took him up on it.
Well, I said if they, if you guys would drop me off a trackle, I'd get that out of there.
Yeah.
Because we have a big trackle, I, I thought it should just be taken out of there, but I guess it takes more than, more steps than just pull it out of there.
Let's see, we did, we did discuss with, we had two tribal employees, Dusty and Dave, the forester and the DNR, and they're, they're, I tell you, they're good to work with, they are good, good people, and I tell you, it is a, it's been a long process, but I think we're, we're getting, we're moving forward in some of the, you know, some of the relationships and some of the timber sales now, I think are, are being looked at prior to. I think Jamie, their tip agent, had a good, really good suggestion earlier, that we form a joint request or grant request for looking at some of the sensitive sites that they identify. So I think we're going to, she wasn't at the last meeting, but I think hopefully that we can coordinate that and move forward with the, like, like a state legacy grant funding, if there's areas, you know, that they want to identify for archaeological studies. As we, as we know, those archaeological studies are not cheap, we thought they were, you know, initially said maybe a couple thousand dollars, and we found they were between 20 and $35,000 for, for a 90-acre parcel, and obviously we cannot, cannot do archaeological studies on whole parcels, so we're going to have to narrow that down to any, you know, and hopefully we can get way ahead of that.
You know, and I want to say, Barry, those two guys from the tribe, they have been very good to work for, and they recommended that we move on and, and cut this now. They recommended that to the council.
We're, we are-
Waiting for the council to-
I think they've looked at different things, we've, they've flown drones and, and did a lot of, a lot of, you know, resources used to, to look into that, where, if there was anything, and they, I think they come, come away with that pretty-
Yeah, there's a lot of good-
So hopefully, again, I think our employees and, and the tribe's employees are having a really good working relationship, if you can keep us, us politicians out of it, it will go a lot, lot smoother, including myself. We always, we always escalate things, seems like, but. Let me see if that is it.
We had courthouse.
Courthouse, we have some issues with our, our-
UKG.
UKG is our, our payroll system, having a lot of issues with that, so just want to give a heads up, there might, might be some more discussions on how we get past the issues we're having with that. It's a good system, but for some reason, it's not working well for us, it works, it's, again, I don't know why.
They don't know why, but there's pages of-
Yeah, we got lots of issues that each employee put down that we're trying to resolve, and, and that was just for information at that meeting, so hopefully we'll get that resolved, and then maybe have them come in and do it, do an upgrade or something in the, in the future, so, or up, maybe correct some things that were wrong, anything else on courthouse, Steve?
No.
I think that's it for now.
I had, I'll go next, I had a DAC meeting. We have a new board member on the DAC, or Jess Lassine, I don't know if anybody knows her, but I know her, she used to be my neighbor, so. Anyway, one of the things that we, a couple of things, one of the things that has been identified by the executive director is our fleet vehicles are, they're bad. They're, so we've started replacing them, so we actually purchased a new, we're going to purchase a new 11-passenger bus that will carry four wheelchair occupants, because currently, right now, the DAC has four wheelchair clients, and they can't carry them all at the same time, so now they will be able to do that. They're going to keep their old bus that carries three, just in case in emergency, it, it still works, it's not, I mean, it's, it's a money pit, because it needs to be serviceable, serviced a lot, but it is still usable, so they're going to hold on to that, because it's really not a high-value item to sell at auction, so they're just going to keep it, in case they, you know, something happens to the new bus or it's in the shop, and they need to have a, be able to transport, you know, clients. Then we also purchased two new fleet cars, and then one used minivan to, to, to add to the fleet vehicles. So, and then we also discussed that, like, they have all these vehicles that don't look alike, so we're going to, we're going to start replacing vehicles, and they're going to hopefully be the same color at least, same, these, these are, these three are, or these two are identical, but, so that's kind of a big deal. And then, one interesting thing that we did at our last board meeting is we all, we, we've all been together and talked and so forth, we've never actually gone around the table and said why we wanted, why, why we, how we got on the DAC board, why we want it, why we like, why we enjoy it, what, what are our goals on the, on the board, so. That was good, because we had a new board member, and so she could pick that up, and things are going well at our DAC, the, the, things are getting better, we're getting more clients still, and we're also getting more community support. They're going, our executive director is learning how to do more billing, so we're getting more, generating more revenue because of the more clients and the more, the better way to bill, and it's, it's really, it's really good. So the next thing we're going to do in the next meeting is we're going to go through the bylaws to make sure that we have them updated, so. So things are looking up for the DAC. Okay, John and I had a fair board meeting, basically they just talked about fair wrap-up, what went well, what didn't go as, as good, what, what can they do to improve a few things, then they came up, they had everybody come up with three item, big-ticket items or, or important items that need to get done, and so they're going to discuss those at the next meeting, because they wrote them down, and- And so they're gonna discuss those at the next meeting, cause they wrote them down and they're gonna bring them back and, and go through them. One of them is their horse barn. The horse barn may make it a couple of years, or it may fall over tomorrow. So it's a, it's a, it's falling apart. And then the, we, they, they're talked about, so when, I don't know if you've been to the fair, but there used to be bleachers right in front of that flagpole. Well, they took those out and now they're going to put a cement pad down there and they're gonna put a new set of handicap accessible bleachers. So that's, that's a pretty big cost to the fair board. That's a, gonna be about $60,000 to do that, that process. But it's gonna be nice and then it's gonna, the grandstand area is looking up. They also have decided to get a software program. So when people register their animals and put, you know, and, and so they're gonna be, they're gonna register them online. You can use a QR code on a cell phone. And of course, everybody, we talked about cell phones this morning in joint governance. Everybody has a cell phone. So that will be, cause before, they're doing it by hand, pencil and paper. And any, and judges, you know, then it'll all be electronic. And then that'll, it'll be an expense, a yearly expense. I think it was like $1,250 a year, but it's gonna be a valuable tool for them to use. Yeah. And next year's Fair Day starts July 23rd to 26th.
So I think I had, again, the big-ticket grandstand moneymakers, it's a demo derby.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
The rodeo was okay, but it got rain.
The weather was terrible, yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah. If the weather had been better, I think it would have been a big, way better turnout.
Yeah, we went, I thought it was, I thought it was fun, if it would have been warmer.
It rained the one day and it was frigid the next day. Nope.
Richard?
Well, just one more thing on NRM there, Barry. You know, so they, they were talking about next year's sale. So initially, they didn't want any more maple cut. But now, this is, they're, they're just getting better to deal with. Now they, they don't have a problem with it, there's not a good trail going there. So they're, it, they're just, they're being more and more helpful.
I think, and we're trying to work with them too. So if there's, if there's a maple stand farther away and we're gonna log in that area, we can, we can use a trail and maintain, you know, get that trail so there's better access to other maple possibilities. So, yeah, I think, I think we're.
Yeah, we, it just is, the relationship is getting a lot better.
Yeah.
Yeah, to me, it seems like that's, I think, what this shows is just how, when we do have a good relationship and open that communication, that hopefully can continue to go that way in all aspects.
And then that Verizon tower for Bad Medicine Lake, supposed to be starting on that in the spring for people who wanna use their phones up there. And then I had EDA with Erica and I don't have anything to add there. I had environmental and you weren't there.
No.
You were hunting.
No, I was working.
Are you working? So we're still, we're trying to get people to cover their loads and they are starting, they're, they're being very receptive to it. We're still not, we're not finding anybody, but they're, they're talking to them and it sounds like we're not, you know, that this is gonna be something that people are gonna do voluntarily. We looked at a, we had a demonstration of a shredder. So anybody that's been to the landfill, we've got a lot of shingles out there. The shredder was very expensive, over a half a million bucks. And it, it didn't impress me, because it didn't, didn't push out a final product. We're gonna, we're gonna get somebody to come in with a grinder and grind them this fall. We're just gonna pay to have that done. But to that, if we were gonna purchase anything, maybe the grinder would be the thing, the shredder. Even if you use the shredder, then it's gotta go through a grinder anyway, so. And I don't have anything else.
Okay, I had a couple of Prairie Lakes Menace will solid waste and perm. Be applying for a $250,000 grant for ash cleanup, that help in our screening that and getting it into local road projects. It does come with a 25% local match. Our annual audit was good. The incinerator is operating well. It's been very dry, so haven't had a issue with over-wet garbage coming in. Lot of construction going right next door down there with that big expansion on Bomb Guard Cheese. And they'll be taking quite a bit more steam when that gets completed. So everything's going well. We should be right on, almost on track or burning the budget amount of garbage at the end of the year. We had negotiations, Dave and I had Wannigan Park. Mainly just spent time reviewing the proposed budget for the coming year, 2025. And they're still working on it. That'll be probably coming up for finalization in the next meeting. And it's kinda brought up this morning at our governance meeting. Just their counter from August 13th to September 13th at the park, right by the bridge. There's over 7,500 people visited and left on the month. So it's very active down there, so. So all I had, what do you have, anything else?
Just one thing to add to that Osage Swim Bee. The township's looking at maybe that road that goes by there to maybe look at vacating that, to part of that, to expand the, maybe parking or something for, in the future. So I'm still looking at that, but hopefully the DNR gets that, that rebar out of there. But another, another great facility for, for a little public park. We didn't even know it was ours, until a couple of years ago.
Any appointments?
I don't have any.
Maybe ask the departments if there is any vacancies. I'm not aware of any vacancies anywhere.
This time, I think we're full. County Administrator Report, Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a request this morning from our county engineer, looking for dates for a road tour. He was suggesting the 29th of this month, that works? No?
No.
He also indicated that any other day, that particular, that last week would also work for him.
The only day that, that week that works for me is the 28th.
The whole week, I'm out of town.
Should I suggest the 28th?
I will not be, I have Lakeland Mental Health Monday, 28th.
So that week, week maybe won't work, unless we wanna look at that Friday, the 1st of November.
He said, or the week before that week, yeah. He didn't suggest the week after, but.
I like the week after.
The week after?
Well, the ground's gonna start to freeze.
That's deer hunting.
Oh, is it?
No, deer hunting is late this year.
Starts the eighth.
Yes.
Starts the eighth.
Not for bull.
Week of the.
That's not.
I can certainly suggest that to him, should I?
The week before is not good for me at all.
The week before, okay, so should I, I can certainly.
Unless it's Thursday or Friday.
Okay.
And I know I'm giving a lot of stuff, but.
And I guess.
Sorry.
Sounds like the consensus is.
I have Tuesday between 3:00 and 4:00 open.
All right.
Yeah, work on some dates with them.
Okay, I, I will get back to him and suggest maybe the first week of November.
I guess I could do the 29th if it's in the afternoon.
In the afternoon.
But not, my mornings are awful that week, other than the 28th.
Okay, is that a possibility for the rest?
I could do.
Not me, but the, for.
29th on the afternoon or the first week of November, is what I'm hearing, okay.
Yeah, I see a lot of the road projects throughout the year anyway, so.
So, okay, all right. The other request that I had gotten was from tribal leaders. They are asking for a meeting with some or all of the board members to meet with their tribal leadership. I do not know the topic, we've asked for the topic. I don't know what the board would like to do, if you would like to have two of you go. They've suggested that they will work around whatever we would like. They can certainly come here to Detroit Lakes. Or if it's just two of you to go there. So I don't know what the wishes of the board are.
I think if we're gonna do two, it would be good for us to know what the topics are, so that we would know.
I, I would agree.
Which two, you know, which two should go. Otherwise, I, I agree. I think a meeting would be great, just, you know, that was one of the things we talked about at our.
Going forward.
Last meeting with them was the importance of, of having an ongoing meeting to, you know, continue to build that relationship. So I would be open to whatever the rest of the board wishes.
Well, I think it'd be helpful for the full, I mean, I think the full, helpful for everyone to be at the meeting and just the relationships will be built by everyone being there. And if you're not there, you can't build a relationship. But I, I don't know what time, what timeframe or, but whatever.
They just suggested that Peggy and I look for some dates and provide that to them. The other option, I would imagine you could do, you're not taking any, obviously, any formal action, it's just a discussion. You could do like a work session or something following. I think that they would appreciate something more in that matter.
I, I think, I mean, I would like to have it a structured meeting, either side can bring up any topic and, and put an agenda out for both sides and maybe make this at least an annual, you know. Do it annually, at least, once a year, we should be.
It'd be nice to have, have an agenda though. I mean, obviously, they can bring up anything they want, but at least.
So you have talking points, yeah, yeah. And we, again, we have asked for that, we have not got.
I also think it would be nice to have it in a less formal, like not in here. You know, maybe like the third floor drawing room or the conference room we were in this morning, where we're all around the table and.
Or we could make it a more of a retreat for both boards, not a either location, just a.
A neutral place?
I don't know, I just get what they're thinking too, more of a casual, just to, I think the relationships can be built without, in, not in these formal settings as much. And maybe not even, the topics, I mean, we certainly will have topics, but sometimes it's just get to know who you are.
Yeah.
You know, and just today, we are people sharing the same, you know, same goals. That we don't agree on everything, obviously, but I think we need to get to that point, so.
And I agree, it should be the full board.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think we could, we could have smaller committee, you know, committee-type meetings with the tribe too. I mean, like our NRM committee, when they wanna attend those, I think they're, but I think, I think both boards get together will build those relationships and.
Okay, all right. I will work on some of that and the topics and dates and see what I can come up with and then I will send that out to you. I, I think maybe it would be good, Mr. Chair, if we just had Cody at the beginning here. Give the update on the grant, if that's okay.
One thing, do we have the district meeting, district forum meeting for AMC coming up?
The 18th, I believe.
That's the 7th?
I think it is the 18th, the 18th, is that Friday?
I think it's the 18th.
It's on a Friday, is it?
Yeah, 18th of October, yeah.
18th, okay.
Okay, yeah, I got it now, just making.
Cody.
Morning. So just wanted to give you a little update. We had a meeting yesterday regarding some childcare projects. There's a grant with the state of Minnesota that came out, or opened up a couple of weeks ago, September 19th, I believe. Did you all get the handout? Okay. So this is the Childcare Economic Development Program through the state of Minnesota Department of Economic and Employment Development. The maximum amount is up to 600,000 for multiple projects, single projects up to 300,000. This is primarily for the expansion establishment, creation of new childcare slots, facilities, programs, services. Obviously, like most grants, eligible entities are nonprofits, county, cities, nonprofit providers, I meant. So through some discussion, some ongoing projects and stuff, we identified that this would potentially be a good program to apply for. We've had meetings with the city, some private childcare providers. Our childcare development lead, that's been working with the county since our, our last childcare grant round. Some other partners, but there's, there's three or four providers that are looking to expand, open up new facilities in the area. A couple of them are, they already have childcare businesses. One of them's a center, or, you know, the childcare center, where they're looking to open up one that potentially could be 24/7 infant toddler care. The other ones are a nonprofit-based, like 24/7 model. And then there's, I forget the third project. But we were having some discussion and we just wanted to kinda put this before the board to see what the, what the feedback is from you guys in terms of being a host applicant for this. The city would be open to it as well, depending on the project scope. But we were really looking at, the primary reason why we'd be potential applicant is we have some land in the city of Detroit Lakes that we could use for this project, potentially with the development. So, yeah, but up there on the screen, if you can see it, on the right-hand side, there's kind of a blue outline. That is a vacant piece of land, part of one of our long-term homeless developments. And that piece is just free and clear. So through our discussions, it was kind of identified that it would, you know, potentially be a really good location for that sort of project, close to the school, centrally located, the infrastructure's there. So what this grant could potentially do is the funding could be used to construct or acquire buildings. And then what you do is you put the new, they would be like single-family homes, they're not facilities, and then they're rented out to providers. That's kind of a way to bypass some of the strict regulations with, I think it's called the Modernization, Modernization Act. Childcare Modernization Act. So we just kinda wanted to bring this up to you and see what the support level was from being a, the lead applicant on this.
Would the proposals be for family childcares or childcare centers, or potentially both?
Well, this would be kinda both, cause what you're doing is, we're gonna have some follow-up meetings here coming up in the next couple of weeks to kinda identify the projects. See which ones are, you know, the most ready. But what we'd be doing is you'd be applying, using two or three of those projects to consider as like a shovel-ready project. And one, again, one of the models is kind of like a center-based. The difficulty with center-based models is the strict regulations, the requirements. Just had a presentation with First Children Finance last week and there's not really, they don't cash flow. There's not a, a model that cash flows for them. So the people that are looking to expand know that. They already have other centers or, or have worked in that space before, but they know it's a need. And it's just an issue, and it's an ongoing issue that's not gonna go away. I mean, we, we did a analysis kinda with our last grant round a couple of years ago and it showed, I think there was around 650 slots empty or needed in our county. The numbers that are on that sheet in your packet, I think, are around 750. And then with the increased regulation, that's just expediting the numbers. I mean, people are leaving the workforce earlier, they're retiring earlier. So it, it's really, like I said, it's not an issue that goes away. And this is just an effort to, to provide some support to those projects that are already looking to expand and then kinda work, work towards a, you know, a county-city partnership, public-private contributions and stuff like that.
Yeah, a couple of things with childcare centers is, you know, you have to, you have to have bachelor degree levels for teachers in each room. And it, it is just not real cost, real cost-effective. They do have variances and stuff for that, but it, you have to be working towards it. So I know Mahubi has really been successful in their pod model, which I know we've talked about in, in the EDA, which is really, you know, similar to like a childcare center, where you have a building, but then you have like individual childcares within that building. I think that this is a great idea. You know, we, we have talked in EDA what we could do with this, this property and we always kinda go back to, you know, could, could this potentially be a childcare? Cause it is in an area that is needed, so.
Yeah, it's just a vacant piece of land in our inventory. And it's got the infrastructure there, so that cost is minimal. And with, you know, the city supportive of this type of development or project, it, it has a, a better collaboration than a potential different type of housing. or project, it, it has a, a better collaboration than a potential different type of housing project, you know, that we've discussed. But yeah, I guess just, I don't know, to summarize this, is really it's, again, it's, it's, it's up to a maximum amount of six hundred thousand, single projects of three hundred thousand. There is one, couple sets of criteria that there could potentially be a requirement for a fifty percent match. If you don't meet the certain guidelines that they put out, I think I've identified that three of those would be covered, you know, meaning that we're meeting a certain income census tract. One of the projects would be potentially outside of normal business hours, so those kind of create a waiver from that fifty percent match.
Would the land be considered a match?
No, it has to be cash in kind.
Can we buy the land?
Well, we own the land already.
We'd buy it from us. EDA could buy it from the county and the EDA sponsor.
Oh, the EDA owns it, so we could sell it. We could sell it to the county and.
I guess, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what we're asking here today.
We're just wanted to see what the support was, because being that this is, you know, county land, the potential use of that land, and then, again, we did get support preliminarily from, you know, city discussions, we did get confirmation that it's developable up to, I think, four units there, you know, two twin homes, that sort of type of construction. But we're really just looking to see if the county is supportive of being the lead applicant. If not, in our upcoming meetings and identifying some projects, we would, you know, if, if we weren't the lead applicant, the city could kind of take on that role, but.
So, go ahead.
If the city and the county partner, could they get separate grants?
Not on this one, no. The idea is to try and consolidate it, to reduce the competitiveness, because it's, it is going to be very competitive, and they expect then, you know, less than forty percent of the projects to get funded, just because of the need. So, one of the, one of the proposed projects, the provider was considering applying for this grant themselves as well, and we're looking to just consolidate that effort into, one, put the projects together to get a better chance of.
So this wouldn't, I just want to clarify, this wouldn't be, we're not going to have a county-owned childcare center, or like, we're not going to run it?
No, I mean.
We're, we're applying for the grants to assist the.
Yeah, the, the two or three projects that are already in the works, and then one potential prospective project that we would look at developing further. We would own the property, but the businesses would be ran independently. So it's the same as having a lease with any kind of tenant, you're just leasing it to a business. Benefit there is that the development, you know, is added to the county inventory. If businesses cease to exist or change, it, it, it does open up the possibility for more housing inventory as well.
So we're, you're just looking for support to apply for the grants?
Yeah, to be the host, the lead applicant on it, yeah.
Lead applicant.
So where would the funding come from that's not covered by the six hundred thousand? Because if you're talking for, for, what, what do you call that?
Yeah, we would, we would obviously shoot low for two to start with, and then have future potential expansion, so a second grant round, future contributions. But yeah, the continued funding, you'd have to look into, you know, we have some reserves through the EDA, there's what the commitment potentially from the county would be from funding, so. And then private contribution as well, that would be.
So whomever would be running the childcares?
Well, that, or employers, you know, there, there can be, you know, fundraising, campaigning, whatever you want to call it, for, for their contributions, which, that's already being done with our Early Care Development Foundation. There's some funds there that can be used towards the projects as well. But this is all very preliminary, we don't have, you know, numbers in terms of development and that sort of stuff, because this just kind of came up in the last week or two. So there's a little bit of work to be done on the budgeting side of things, but we don't know that there would be, you know, much of a continued or an in-kind match from, from our end. So we'd be looking to cover a majority of it with this grant.
That's not going to go that far, though. We're seeing what building costs now, it's just wild. If you get three hundred thousand, that wouldn't even cover one of those.
Right, that would be just for like one project. So I mean, the intent would be if we're going to apply for two or three of these projects, that we would try to go for them, you know, the full amount, but.
Yeah. Well, if you apply for the grant, do you have to take it, or how does that work? I mean, how does, is it a lot of work to apply for it? I mean, I, I, I just want to know where the rest of the money's going to come from, because we're, we're short on money, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the question, is that, you know, if the county is supportive of it, that they're kind of making a commitment to potentially be, you know, investing a little more into childcare and that sort of stuff. But we do have some funds through the EDA in our, our fund balances that can be used, and then there's always other options, money to apply for and stuff like that. But really, the, you know, the intent was, since this was kind of a short notice thing, and with the discussions with the city is that they wanted to know if we were going to be the lead applicant, that it would be supported. So we could kind of progress further, get a couple of meetings coming up this meeting, this week to get more information, and then we would just start working on the application.
When, when is the application due?
The end of October, so it's a quick turnaround.
I would, I would also recommend having a conversation with Mahubi to see what interest Mahubi would have in potentially.
Yeah, we've already had a couple of meetings, but we do have more meetings coming up. And, and the different types of projects are different scopes at work and, and, and stuff like that. So, again, it's not a, this is just one piece to the, the puzzle, but we just wanted to see if there was support here from the, the board level, moving forward at least to apply for this, and, and see if we can get some money to start pushing some of those projects forward, but.
What are you guys' thoughts?
I don't know.
I like the project, but I don't know if we're going to be a lead, does that, I don't know if, I don't, yeah, I just don't know what, 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 how mu, what we have to support, what we, how much financially we would have to support. Would, would the city of Detroit Lakes be a co-lead? I mean, that, I, I don't, yeah, that's my, that's, that's my concern from the issues. But I like the idea of the opposing project.
I mean.
And the grant.
The project that was proposed, looking at our land, you know, that's very preliminary, and hopefully with some meetings coming up, we can get some really rough numbers. But, you know, with the city partnering, they're going to have some contribution into the project. We're contributing the land. But the other projects in terms of the, the already established childcare providers, those would be completely covered by the grant. So the investment right now is none from the county, but the potential that it could turn into, you know, some, some ask in the future. But really, we're just looking, again, for the position of the, the applicant, whether they're going to be, you know, taken on by the county, or if we need to kind of hand it back off to the city and narrow down the scope of the project, but.
Yeah, I think, I think it's hard, again, I think this is a fantastic project, but it's, it's hard when we don't know what, I mean, we, we could be talking no contribution, we could be talking hundred thousand dollars in contribu, you know, like, we don't know what that contribution is. So while I think it's a great project, I think we probably need more information.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we kind of expected that.
So if we, if, if we, we have another board meeting this month, would you know more information?
Yeah, I mean, I would hope so, because we have some meetings lined up to get some numbers and stuff, but really just wanted to, you know, what, we can start putting the application and stuff together regardless, but just was looking more so for feedback from our counterparts, you know, at the city and our other partners that we've been discussing with. So just to kind of get some direction that if we're moving forward or if you want to look elsewhere and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, just, just bring it back on the fifteenth, I believe it is, the more information and from the city and Mahubi and what other, other partners you have out there. Project is great, because there's a shortage for daycare.
Yeah, it's.
Who's going to fund it?
And it affects, you know, your workforce and other stuff like that, so.
Another person to talk to, too, I believe it, was it Stevens County? That they, they did a similar project, where they were, I think it's the pod model, though, like what Mahubi's.
Yeah, I mean.
But they might be a good one to talk to about.
It was Ray, Ray Amors.
Yep.
Yeah, it depends on the terms and stuff. I mean, pod model's kind of a.
Yeah.
They don't like to use that term because of the way it intermingles with like the statutory language and stuff, but that's kind of how this is modeled off of. I mean, essentially what you're potentially doing is, like Stevens County, they built single-family homes, and then instead of putting a resident in there, they're putting a business in there. So the provider shows up, they have their own space, they run it just like a business. There'd be requirements involved that they have to go through, you know, preliminary approvals with a financial institution like First Children's Finance, they have to submit a business plan. So there's other ongoing support in that, that, that whole plan, so that you're not just leasing it to a business and, you know, running it for six months and then closing the doors. This is meant to be a, more of a long-term, ongoing program, and then, you know, hopefully those providers would eventually expand. But that's, that's how Stevens County did it, so.
Think that's consensus, is to bring it back on the fifteenth, more information on the providers?
Mary, did I miss anything, or?
I don't think so, I just had asked him just to, because this came up very quickly, to at least provide what information we had as of yesterday, I guess, was the first time I had heard about it, so.
Here.
Thanks, Cody.
Thanks, Cody.
It's just hard to give a whole.
Yeah.
It is.
Give any feedback when you just presented something at that time and just.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I was more so looking for him just to provide information. So there, just a reminder, this is the township, the Township Association meeting on October seventeenth. There was a tentative agenda put in your packet that we've been provided. And that is, yeah, I believe it's at seven, if I have the time right, seven PM, yeah.
It's at seven, yes, registration at six thirty. If you're not there, Mary will not register.
I was going to say, is Mary in check to the registration? The next item that I have for you to consider is a resolution, it's in your packet, ten twenty-four one A. This is a topic with regards to exempt status employees. This has been on the radar, I guess, for a couple of years. Several of our positions, or all of them, with the exception of four positions in the county, were looked at for exempt status, exempt status being they are not hourly employees. This was also, I also had these positions reviewed, just to double-check with our DDA consultant as well. And from my perspective, what I know of the history of positions and becoming exempt status versus hourly, there, it's the fair wage and labor, you know, you apply certain duty tests to positions to see if they meet the threshold for exempt status. So across the county, again, what I can glean from what I have looked at, all positions that meet the threshold for exempt status across departments are exempt status, with the exception of these four positions, three being in the sheriff's department and one being in highway. So if you're looking at treating departments fairly, I guess my recommendation would be to look at these positions and, and consider these to go to exempt status versus hourly.
Mr. Chair, well, I think we had discussion in, in high, in sheriff's office, and we, we elected that this, we did not want to move this direction.
Correct.
I think that's the direction of the full committee. I think Highway discussed this, what was.
We did discuss it, I don't know that we decided what we were, what we should do about it, it's a tough.
I don't think we decided one way or the other, but we got a situation where at times we got people over there that are salaried, that are putting one heck of a lot of overtime in there because of emergencies, whether it's snowstorms, floods, whatever. To me, it's just kind of treating everyone the same, either hourly or salary.
I, I agree that each department should be uniform. I don't know that the county itself needs to be uniform. I would suggest that we move, there's one individual in highway that's, that's different from, so there, there is a conflict of, of employees there. So I think we should move, instead of moving all these, all these employees, I think we should move the one employee to hourly and try that. I think, I think both options are available, I think both options are reasonable. I, I think we are upsetting an apple cart that doesn't need to be upset in this, in this case. And I think we try it, and if, and if, and if there's issues in other departments, you know, depart, department by department should be uniform. This does not align the whole county on the same page, which I think is what the goal of, of HR would be, but I don't think that's necess, a necessity. So I would like us to move the one position, and I think that employee is, is acceptable to that, to hourly rather than salary. So then those employees in highway are the same, so, you know, so they're treated the same. And that way, I think, you know, I, I don't want to get into specifics, but, you know, we recognize in those extreme conditions in, in, in need, it's not emergency, but it's a necessity to, to do that job, and we tried to, tried to figure out how we can, you know, HR wouldn't allow us to get bonuses, you know, when you have extreme conditions. So I think hourly would be probably a better way to go to recognize those extra hours. And we don't want, we don't want to burn out our employees either. So I would recommend, and I would like us to move the highway maintenance supervisor to hourly and leave the others the same. That's what my recommendation would be, would be.
Is that a motion?
I would, would make that a motion. And with that motion being, being the highway maintenance supervisor from salary to hour, and then the board at the, be it resolved that they will move that from hourly to, from exempt status to hourly, that position. That would create departments uniform individually, not county-wide.
I'll second that motion.
Second, Mary Richard, for the discussion. And then basically be leaving these four as, as is.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Foes? Karen. Thank you all.
So the second resolution for consideration is with regards to the Toad Mountain project. And with that said, this has been a bit of a moving target, as I've indicated to all of you. Lots of information changes, changes. And the intent of this resolution really was to allow the board the opportunity to consider accepting the donation for the project to move forward for the master plan, and as well as to attempt to capture the wishes, the wishes of the, the donor as well. So I just, I wanted to clarify that. As you all know, there's been a lot of information and input from specifically the township and other, other individuals as well with regards to this project. So this is before you to consider. I know that it's been asked to be on the agenda and to be removed from the agenda, so I'm not sure what, what the wishes of the board are today. But the changes, and I know that we've heard some information from some of the individuals from the public, that last board meeting, that this was voted down, if you will, or to shut down the project down. I felt it was important to bring it back for at least discussion and or consideration, since there have been some circumstances that have changed. Not all circumstances, but monetarily, the situation has changed. So with that, I will let you go ahead.
My question is, is the township board had a chance to act or has a board on this resolution?
No, their next meeting is on Monday.
Pardon?
Their next meeting is this, this, or the second Monday, not, it's the second Monday of October, so they.
So they, the full, their full board, essentially.
Correct, and that, that was the last, sorry, that was the last email that I had gotten from, is that they had wished to have this.
And I can, I can say just, just one thing from the last meeting that we had at the town board is, you know, the town, the town board was in. town board is, you know, the town board was in favor of the mountainside. Not, you know, they did not want the county to be a part of the lakeshore property. At least that was my recollection. Is that my, is that correct, Randy? Like the lakeshore part, you know, where the cabins are, that really, there was an interest in that being a part of it. We had discussed the bay part and the mountain part. So that, the wish, that's my concern. I've been, I'm pretty open that, I know we don't all agree about, about the lakeshore property, but I, I don't think the county should be in the cabin owning business. You know, I don't, I don't know that that is something that, we don't know what the ongoing costs of that would be. There, there's going to be maintenance for the cabin portion. I think, you know, in this resolution, you know, we want it to be used in need of healing. And I recognize that and I think that would be helpful, but I just don't know that that's something for the county to be, to be a part of. And I, I don't feel comfortable making any decisions on this without having brought this back to, to the town board. And I think, I think, you know, I don't know where, because we've had lots of kind of communication about this, this, you know, originally it was 250, now we're at 50. Now, you know, there had been discussion of joint powers agreements. There's, there's been a lot that I, I, I don't know that we should be tackling something if we don't have some significant control over what can happen. It's a large property, it's a large amount of money, there's a lot of unanswered questions. And if we're going to have a lot of kind of conditions on what, what can be done, I don't know that, I don't know that we should move forward with this, but.
Carrie, probably you could explain the joint powers issue.
Yes, I had a meeting with several of the interested parties Friday, and there had been a request for a joint powers agreement. And really what they were asking was a joint powers agreement between the county and the township and a nonprofit. And I did write that, you know, that information for you to review. However, with the joint powers agreement, that's really only allowed between government entities to have equal say in a project. So what they really were asking really isn't something that could happen with regards to that aspect of it.
Mr. Chair, I guess, just so everyone knows, this resolution was not put together by any board member. And while we may have had some knowledge of it, there are things in there that I wouldn't, that are not, I will not support. No, I lost my page here, but.
I have it here.
I think today, today is a real, I mean, like, the cabins, I mean, the cabins could be, if you wanted to go down there and keep it natural, I think it's a great fishing location, possible for fishing piers. But I think in the end, you could even raise the cabins and eliminate them because, or move them or sell them to someone else. That's not a, but I think the study will, will help tell you this. Now, it is, in my understanding, it is up to $250,000. And I think they were, I think the first part of this is, is the study. If the donation, the donor does not want to pay for the study, I don't, I think we're not going anywhere. But to keep, I think if we want to, I think we have to be honest with ourselves. We have, what we want to look at is if this goes through, and I think that the grants are for nonprofit or for non-motorized primitive area, I think we have to say, we don't, we won't accept any RV camping, we won't accept any motorized, you know, motor boats. I mean, that's, that's what we, we would be looking at, too. So I think it would fit in that area, but we can't be tied by resolution to, to, to all these conditions if we do move forward. That's, it can't, it can't be done. If that's the case, then the, then the property would, should be bought privately and done how you, how you wish with it. So I'm certainly interested in seeing what the math, what the plan would be and if the math or the, the study would be, if the study finds that it's, you know, it may not, it may not qualify. If they say we need RV camping, we have a shortage, well then the prop, then it's not going to move forward for our opinion. We don't think that's a reasonable. But today, I think we should move forward in accepting a grant to pay for the study. And that's all we have to do today. And with the acknowledge, if that study comes back positive to show, to ask for not, you know, the non-motorized and those recommendations are acceptable, then, then you can move forward. If not, and that's a risk that the donor will have to accept. If they, you know, it's a risk for the donor. They are putting out money for a study that they don't know will come back in a way that the grants will approve. So I think we move it, move it forward on conditions of accepting the grant, moving forward. Now, I wouldn't pass this resolution stating that, but simply accepting the grant to pay for the master, the master plan for that area. That's what I would think.
I can't support any of it. So 50,000 is a nice, that's a nice donation, but this is going to cost a lot more than 50,000. And we don't have any money.
This grant is for, their, their offer is 250, up to 250,000. The 50,000, the first part of it is just for the study. When the study comes back, the additional for up to 250. And if that's not the case, I can't support it. I mean, I can't support, if the total amount's 50,000, we're done. If the total amount's 250, I think then we review it. And when we get that study back, then we can see what the costs are. I think ongoing, a primitive area is not going to be a huge upkeep annually. And we will not have cabins that we, I mean, we're not in the business of renting out cabins. That's, and we, and maintenance of those. That, I agree, so.
I don't want any new employees. I mean, employees are very expensive, and so I don't want any new employees. And I, I don't feel like that we have any money to go towards this project. I think the county is.
I think one of the things we talked about at the last meeting, too, was kind of the unknown of, you know, right now, we have a lot of money in our parks and recs budget, you know, because, well, we had, not have, had.
Yeah.
You know, that, that, we don't know what that's going to look like for replenishing it moving forward. We don't know, you know, with our, the new property, the tax forfeiture, you know, laws, we don't know what that, that money is going to be there to replenish it. So while we have, you know, a little bit of funds now, we also have a lot of other projects and a lot of other properties that we do currently own that could use. I mean, I think, I think the, the plan would be beneficial. It would give us some ideas of what our needs are. It would give us some ideas of the cost of what it could be. But I have to go back to what I said at the last meeting of, is this a need or is this a want? And, you know, I don't know. So.
Well, the master, my understanding, the master plan is needed just to apply for a grant and that would, and I think the regional park designation comes along with it. Is that correct, Steve?
Yeah.
So if you get the grant, it's going to be a regional park, right?
Yep.
As part of the strings?
Destination.
Okay.
Wish of the board?
I don't know.
I think if we do anything, I would, I would like us to make a motion to approve a resolution, not, and I'm not going to quote this one, but whereas anonymous donors have pledged a donation. Now, I think originally I would say the amount of the regional study master plan, which would be 52, I think it was what?
54, wasn't it?
What was the amount, Steve? For 52,000. And whereas the donation is, the first and second whereses are okay. I think the third one, the trust for public land has agreed to purchase land on behalf of Becker County. Again, and if, if we move forward, should be added. And then the whereas the wish of the donors, the mountain and the lakeshore should be non-motorized, remain in its natural state. That one is okay. Below that is, I would eliminate those at this time. If we want to move, if we move forward, there can be other considerations for those, for anything else. But so, so then it would go down to now there, now therefore be it resolved. And that revised amount would be to purchase, to do the master planning would be the 52, 52,000?
52,000 and some, yes.
Do, do we know in, is there the possibility of the other 200?
It, it will not, in my opinion, it will not move forward without the, it will not move forward if it does not match the 250. And that would be from anonymous donors. That's my opinion. It doesn't have to be stated at this time, but that's the, that's the, that is the consensus of, that's my opinion, too, that the full contribution would have to come through. So it, and it might not even cost, it might not, if it moves fast, it wouldn't even cost that, so.
You want to raise your motion?
I'll make that motion. Peggy, did you get all the whereses, keep the whereses except for, whereas the wish of the donors, the cabins remain on the lakeshore property, that one would be eliminated and then down to the, all the way down to the now therefore. So you'd, one, two, three, the four bottom whereses would be stricken. And we could put a whereas the, if you would like, I certainly could add, whereas the total contribution of the donors would be up to 250, would be the $250,000 to proceed. If you wanted to add that from don, from anonymous, from donations, put it in the resolution so it's, so we, so everyone is acknowledging that.
Um, my struggle is just, I think, I, I think that until we have it all cleared and brought to the, back to the town board at their next meeting, that's what I, if this is something that we're going to move forward, I would, I would prefer for us to first bring this to the town board. But again, I'm just, that's just me.
So you're basically, Barry, your motion was to accept the donation of 52,000?
52,000 to, for the?
Master plan.
The master plan and acquiring Toad Mountain.
Okay.
We could also.
I think that's just shortened to the point. At this time, leave that as a motion?
I'll make a motion, 1B.
Have a second? I'll second that for discussion and for the discussion.
Well, I don't think this, I think the donation and maybe the county can wait till they hear from the township and, and maybe the applicant, if it doesn't come off favorable, but they can make the decision if they want to proceed at that time. If the donation, if the, if the donors want to hear what the township has to say and they don't feel they can come together with a working solution, they have the option to not fund it. Because the county's, the county's at a no loss to get this, to get the research done if, if we get this. It's, it's a donation. But I would encourage the township to, I mean, take a look at what the future of that is and if you have stipulations. And the plan will tell you if, what's, what's going to be needed or wanted in that area. And if it's, if it's something that's not accommodating to what, what's wanted by the donor and the township and the county board, then you, then you don't move forward.
I think the struggle is, is I don't know that it's wanted.
I feel the same way.
By the, by the town.
People are getting.
Boards and those that live there.
People are getting tired of coming to these meetings, for one thing, and it does, and some people don't know about this. I think if the public wants it, they can donate and there, there's got to be a way that the public could buy it. And we, because I, I just don't, I don't have any money to spend on it and I don't want to put any employees there. The county owns a lot of property and I don't see this, I, I'm sorry, I don't see this one being that special.
The one thing the master plan or the study will do will get public input to see if the public does, are interested. So that is one aspect that will happen from that. Just throw that out there.
We've got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Just, just to, just to note that, that if the donation isn't received, we're not, we're not moving forward with.
Correct.
With that master plan.
And I would also like to mention, too, just part of the discussion, that the RAC Committee, as a member of the RAC Committee, would like to have a study done. And this is a way to do that.
Further discussion, comments? Not, call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poked?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
Mr. Chair, just for a point of clarification on the, on the prior exempt status employees, I just wanted to clarify the date that that would go into effect. Originally, I had suggested.
January 1?
Yeah, or we could do it immediately. It's one employee. So I just wanted to clarify that with the board's wishes.
I would think do it immediately, or next pay period.
And I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that we were on, okay, very good. Thank you. That's all I have.
You want probation?
Morning, Brent.
Hi.
Morning, Brent.
So we have in front of you today a quick need to formalize our local corrections advisory group. And that basically consists of all of our folks that is listed on the resolution 1024-1B. Our judges, county sheriff, local police, county attorney, public defenders, myself, county commissioners, county administrator, human services representatives, county members and anybody else that the advisory board would like to put on as part of our advisory board themselves. So basically what happens is, this is a group that we'll put together and we talk all things corrections and criminal justice within Becker County. We haven't had it for many, many years. And with the new funding formula that came out last year, this is a requirement for us to put into play. As far as meeting schedules and all that kind of stuff, it's up to the group itself. But as of today, we just need a resolution stating that we will establish.
Reestablish.
Reestablish from years ago.
I think I was on this board 20 years ago.
Yeah, you probably was, yep. To start up again so that we are in compliance with it. So other than that, Wade and myself will kind of coordinate our first meetings. We'll get together as a group, kind of decide the direction and where we're going to be going from there, the frequency of the meetings. Some, some of these across the state meet once a year. Some of them meet once a month or quarterly. And it all depends on, on the group and what they want. So I have in front of you the resolution that we are seeking for today.
And you want commissioner, commissioners on that?
Correct. It would be nice if we did. Yep, one or two is typically what our other advisory groups have around the state.
I think we can appoint somebody at the time it's established.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you do have interest in that committee, I don't know how you guys assign committees. I would work with Carrie most likely or?
Usually the chairman appoints, but then it's up to the individual if they want to accept it or.
I think a lot, too, will depend on if you're having monthly meetings or annual meetings.
Yeah.
Monthly, I don't know. I don't know who would want it.
That would be pretty busy. To start off, it'll, it'll probably be a very low frequency. And then anytime that we call them together.
Okay. I got one question before, not, not about you, but the resolution. So when you made your resolution, you said 1B? Is that?
1D.
1D.
Or 1D?
Mm-hmm.
All right. That's what I thought you said, but I, hearing was.
I recall from, you know, way back that these were, I did think they were pretty productive. You could, you would. productive, you could, you would, you know, you'd hear, you'd hear some things that you could alter, and, and I, I think it's always good if you can get the judges and the attorneys and, and probation, and to tie to streamline expenses too, is, is always what the county's looking at, to seeing how we can do things, you know, better or cheaper, or-
Absolutely.
Or both.
It's all part of it.
Does this include juvenile probation?
Yes.
Yeah, it does.
Yep, all things probation, correctional services, yep.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve 1024-1B.
I will second.
Motion, Barry, second by Dave, further discussion. Hearing on, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Carrie. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. We have a break scheduled, Brian.
If you want.
After this, yeah.
We, we can wait.
I'm not dying.
You want it?
You must be.
Good morning, commissioners, I'm requesting for you to approve resolution 1024-1C, which is to decline to designate a deputy register for the new office in Ogama due to the cost.
I think, you know, we, we asked a lot of questions about this, and, and I think, I think we'd have more interest, but we're not allowing the, the driving, you know, we're not allowed any expansion of services. And I think the shortcomings of the state is the driving, testing, and, and that. I, I think if we put an office in Ogama, I think you, we would lose money, but I, I would like us to, you know, keep looking at, you know, what we think the cost of moving the office into a better foot traffic area, you know, because this is, it's kind of a cumbersome to get to the DMV and, in the courthouse, you've got to go here, and the parking's poor. I think we could increase our, I think we could foot traffic and, and if we had it in a more accessible spot. And I think, just, I, we've talked in the past of maybe looking at, at the mall, and I think they really want a destination piece in one of their spots in the mall, and I, I do think that we could, I think we should look at that. I know, I know it's harder for you when you're not on site for staffing, but I think the community would appreciate a, maybe a more service-friendly place to go to. It's something you can, I, I-
I will think about it, but in my-
But, everything you said about prior to-
Okay, we tried, I mean, we were over there during the remodeling, and it was inconvenient because people pay taxes, they vote, they do multiple things in the courthouse besides DMV. And I think us making a destination for a private retail business is not what government does. I'm sorry, that's just my opinion.
I think the, the service would be to the people that use the DMV.
Right, but if you're going to go to DMV at the mall, and then you're going to come over here because you want to pay taxes, you're being inconvenienced.
Yeah, but I, I think most of the people, you're calling the license, it's strictly licensed and-
And that's, yeah.
I think license you do every month, like there, it's spread throughout the month where property tax and voting is-
Right here.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think there's too much commingled foot traffic in the, but.
We have a resolution in front of us, 1C?
And the resolution is to decline?
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion to approve 1C.
I will second 1C.
Motion by Eric, second by Dave, further discussion?
Just, you know, we asked a lot of questions if the service would be expanding, or if the, or, and, and we didn't get a, it's, it's not very forth, the state wasn't very forthcoming, but it is, no expanded service, and, and it's certainly not, not going to be very profitable. And there was no DNR service there either, which was another, which was some, a service that we offer here, so.
Yeah, and they wouldn't disclose location or anything like that.
Or price, or-
Price, or, yeah, lease rent, or, yeah.
Okay. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All in favor to decline? Let's get that squared.
Favor of the resolution.
Yes. Thank you.
How we doing? Thank you.
Let's, 9:48, let's take a quick break.
Order here. Tiara.
Hello. So, we had a benefits committee meeting and we, as a committee, are recommending to make a move on a number of benefits over from... So, Avasys is the first page. It is for our vision insurance. We are recommending that we move from Avasys to MetLife. Very similar coverages, as you can see. It will go down slightly in premiums for employees and then it will also expand our network that is covered in the area. And the second benefit that we're recommending is for our dental insurance. For Hu... We're currently on Humana. There were some coverage issues going on with Humana. We're not 100% sure what the details behind it is, but we do know for sure Apple Tree in Holly was one provider that dropped them altogether and will not even submit claims on behalf of I guess you can say anymore. Very similar coverages as well, but again, we would go down slightly in premiums if we did make the move to MetLife.
Just to let you know, so if you go to one of these other ones that aren't covered, it's not... You're not necessarily going to get paid fully for, but they will submit the bill for you and get the... So, you might owe a little bit, but the Apple Tree has now said they won't even submit the bill. So, there was some concerns over what's going on there. And the other thing to note on this is that any existing condition will be... It's like you've been... If you were previously insured, the new insurance will... You will be continuous insurance. You won't have a gap there or they won't start a new look-back time. Like, if you're starting that insurance, there's a look-back time and it's shortened up in the new... In MetLife, so that's a positive for new enrollees.
I think the other thing to note about dental insurance is it seems like there's an overall, like, trend that they're taking less and less coverage, that they're more and more out of network. So, really this...
Yes. So, one thing that Isaac, who is our third party, that we do go through for these supplemental benefits, one thing that he did note is as soon as an area starts becoming saturated or more saturated with clients than there are dental offices, dental offices do start moving away from actually accepting insurances, simply because if you accept an insurance, you have to take that as a discounted rate to get that contract. And when we have more patients in the area than can actually get seen by all of the dentist's office that we have, they no longer need to do that. But, like we said, they will submit the claims on behalf of the patients in most cases, aside from Apple Tree with Humana.
And the rate that they pay is a nine out of... They surveyed 10 dent... What is it? A ninety... Nine out of 10? I don't know, but it's mostly... Odds are they're going to pay the full amount anyway, but there's cases where they won't.
So, it goes off based on your area. Your area is the first three numbers of the ZIP code, so we would include, like, Morehead all the way down through Fraser, Perron area. And they will pay nine out of 10 dentists, like Barry mentioned, and anyone in one of those 10 out of 10 situations, you would only have to pay the difference of what the dental office is charging versus what they're actually willing to cover. Short-term disability is the next benefit that we're recommending to move. This will almost completely be lateral move. Nothing changes in premiums or anything. Like Barry mentioned, there is a change in the look-back period between Sun Life, who we're currently with, and MetLife. So, Sun Life currently does a... It's a 12-month period, so if you have a pre-existing condition that comes up within the 12 months, the first 12 months that you're covered, they'll look back six months. But, they have an interesting caveat that if you were treatment-free for six months from your last treatment, then they would still cover. It's just a little bit different. Whereas with MetLife, it's still a 12-month period for a pre-existing condition, but they'll only look back three months. So, that is slightly better. And as Barry mentioned, we... These would all be no-loss, no-gain policies. So, if someone is currently covered, expecting to go out on, like, a maternity leave or having a procedure coming up, they would still be covered with no difference in their coverages. And then with the accident, hospital indemnity, and critical illness insurances, I did highlight what the differences were between the two. If there is highlighting in one column, then that is a little bit better coverage versus the other. The other thing to note with both Cigna and with Sun Life for short-term and the supplemental benefits is that they were not paying out to our employees like they should have been, and it was a very difficult process for the employees to go through. We do expect MetLife to be better and through Isaac, they do have a representative directly for... Or actually, a department directly for consulting with MetLife. So, we do expect that to be better. This is also just a straight moveover for premiums for those insurances.
They guarantee some rates, but they're only one-year locked-in, so.
Except for the short-term is two, I think.
No, we're not locked into an actual contract on any of them, so we could move again next year if we so choose to.
They're two-year pricing, but...
Two-year pricing.
One-year locked-in.
Correct. Any questions?
Oh, thanks for that.
I think we need a motion to approve.
I did not do a resolution, and that's my apologies for that.
I'll make a motion.
Carrie, is that right? We need a motion to move forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the benefit changes recommended by the committee.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave, second by Erica. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Here. Sorry.
Good morning, board members.
Good morning, Steve.
For us, we have a resolution to... A request to change one of our positions from part-time to full-time. Just a little background on that. We purchased trucks and we're hauling all our own solid waste transfer. We started this year, and at that time, we weren't sure how many hours it was actually going to take. And so, over the summer, we've had to use other staff. We had a one-full-time truck driver. We have a one-part-time truck driver pulling loads. In the interim, when the part-time one, or those who weren't able to do it, we've had other staff that have filled in with CDLs and generally, it's management. Our transfer station manager, our mechanic, they both have CDLs and they were pulling trailers. And we took one part-time transfer station attendant that had been out for medical purposes, and earlier this year, we transitioned that with a request to change that to part-time transfer station operator with a CDL. We advertised that. We didn't get any response. And so, to fill that need, we'd like to change this, that part-time position to full-time, also to address the hours that were short and help cut down on our overtime going into the future.
I would have liked to seen the cost analysis on this, you know, in the packet.
That's my apologies. I thought it was in there.
Did you email us the...
I sent it to Carrie. Did that get emailed out?
It didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have...
I just gave it.
We're eliminating one part-time position that was a driver transfer slash transfer station attendant. That would be going to full-time then.
So, it would... The 24 budget... 25 budget would be significantly higher, correct?
It would go up. If we're able to reduce our overtime, I would estimate about $11,000.
Okay.
And Dean has been spending a lot of time in a truck, which is not really what he's there for. We are... We are short. We've had a lot of other problems out there. We've had people all...
This... Ultimately, I don't believe this will really impact our budget a lot because we've also changed some practices out there with our solid waste. We've been doing a lot more sorting within the transfer station. Meaning, we get stuff in, we sort out scrap metal, sort out other things, reducing our net disposal cost.
So, you...
We do use...
That's kind of what I wanted to see on this, was the lower overtime, the increased... You know, the... I got... I have that, plus the increased revenue or, you know, or profitability on revenue. So, you know, that's what you kind of want to see. If you're going to add a position, how is that going to be paid for? And I realize it's all paid for within environmental funds, so it's not general fund levy, but it is... It is a fee that would, you know, if it doesn't come to fruition like we hope to, a fee would be increased on tipping fees, I would assume.
It does, right.
I mean, that's where it would have to go, so.
Wishes of the board.
I'll make a motion for a full-time driver.
Motion by Richard. I'll second that. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Todd, could we take... We got planning and zoning scheduled for 1:05. It shouldn't take too long. Right?
It shouldn't. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Good morning, Kyle.
Good morning. First items, Planning Commission recommendations from September 25th. First being a request for a conditional use permit for storage units with a recommendation to approve.
Motion to concur.
Anyone here to speak on that?
We didn't... Yeah, I don't think we took any public testimony on that one.
Nope.
No.
I'll make a...
Mersion?
Make a mersion. Make a motion to concur with the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Motion by Erica, second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
Next applicant, Daniel and Carrie Kleist, requesting a conditional use permit to construct a retaining wall. Recommendation to approve.
I'll make a motion to concur.
Motion by Erica, second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just to be sure, that was around number four, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, there were some applicants that would...
Yeah, there were a couple.
Table that... Yeah. Moving to the sixth applicant, Ryan and Andrea Berg, requesting a change of zone from residential to agricultural and a conditional use permit to operate a business for horseboarding, riding, and lessons. Recommendation was to approve.
Make a motion to concur.
You made the motion?
Second.
Further discussion? I know Kyle and I talked, I think after the meeting, that why this ended up, this 40-acre tract residential...
Right.
...versus agricultural.
Yeah, it seems odd.
It's been used agriculture for years, you know, from horses to, I believe, one time a bank farm and so forth. So, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
And the last item I have for you, just want to be on the agenda, to notice the public hearing on October 8th for the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. We'll be taking public testimony at 8:30 a.m., first-floor boardroom, and then be taking that testimony into consideration, putting it all together, bring it back to you October 15th, and hopefully, taking action on the plan.
Carrie, are we... Are we going to be here in attendance? Didn't we schedule that for next Tuesday?
Yep.
I believe so.
Special meeting.
It's a public hearing with us in attendance.
Correct.
And Robin will be here in person. Not sure if Moira or anyone else, but for sure her.
We're going to have it, right?
Yep.
You'll be here.
That's the way we noticed it.
What, did you schedule the room for five hours then?
Richard's eyes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good job.
How, Todd? Thanks for waiting.
Yeah. I don't know if being last is good or bad. We'll find out. Get all my supporting documents ready. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Good morning.
Good morning, Todd.
First item I have this morning is a request to purchase body-worn cameras and mobile cameras using our legislative public safety funds. As you know, we received $996,000 in public safety funds to be used in 2024 through June of 2025. And with that, our body-worn cameras are coming to end of life, which makes it hard to maintain also. So, we are requesting to purchase Axon body cameras. The total cost of that, body and mobile cameras, excuse me, the total cost being $1,039,727.50. $400,000 of that has been earmarked through the IT department for this project, and the rest of that, which is $639,727.50, would come out of this legislative money.
Todd, the $400,000 earmark, that was out of this...
Special General Fund, yes.
And we're not sure at this time what that total balance is left in that because we got some committed...
Well, this was...
With armored vehicle. That's coming...
Yes.
Out of that.
Yep, that's already been... And that was board-approved in June of '23.
Mr. Chair, I can give a very brief update on that. We were working on that yesterday, the former ARPA funds, stuff in general. And the preliminary look at that, and it will... I'll bring that forth, is probably under $400,000 left. So, it's overspent.
With the stuff that's earmarked or...
Without.
Without.
I think on the... On today's... Today's funded, show the balance at 2.8. Are we that far behind?
Sorry. No, I'm talking just specifically about the funds that we received, the old ARPA dollars and what was in that.
Isn't the... Then it shows Special General was at 2.8?
Yes. That would be including that balance through the ARPA funds that were being tracked separately. I'm calling them ARPA funds, sorry.
Okay, what I'm not following...
Yeah, I'm confused. Yeah, I'm confused too.
Sorry, I didn't mean to confuse everybody. There was this... Mary, do you want to help out? You were doing the tracking.
Special General is 2.8.
Great. But, there have been funds visiting, like that Bearcat, $400,000. There are...
Well, we've asked...
...$100,000 in funds in that that have already been earmarked for projects.
That's the question, and we've asked that committee, that at committee level, what are those funds? Because the $400,000 has been earmarked, so is that included?
No.
This was earmarked for...
It was earmarked through the Bearcat.
No, it was earmarked for radios.
No. On the bottom of this form, it says have not been presented before.
I don't remember.
Or for the Bearcat or the...
The Bearcat's on there, it's been there like two years.
Yeah, that...
Body cameras were not on the list as being...
Well, we've had about 40 lists, and I'm pretty sure that they were on a list.
I thought they were too, but...
But that list has been a moving target also, and we haven't had conformity.
So, you have the number on that, on the Bearcat?
Yeah, I recall that, the $320,000.
I remember that.
About $321,000 for the Bearcat. Yeah, because we ordered that and we had to saw...
Well, the cameras are at end-of-life. I mean, there's no... And the...
How much of this $996,000 of the public safety funds or the... Whatever. Is that what they're called, public safety funds, that we got from the state of Minnesota? How much of that have we spent?
Roughly $50,000. I think it's just a little under that up-to-date.
Some of that's coming for approval today and some of it's earmarked, so.
Somebody won't be getting something off of the Special General Fund then. I'd like to know what else is...
We need to... We need to have that list.
Yeah, I think we need to spend some time getting accurate.
I wonder if we can table this, the body... The body-worn camera, just until we get a more accurate...
Yeah, I...
Number on the...
I can't support it right now because I don't know, and if that special fund is completed, where's the money going to come from?
Mr. Chair, I think Judy is online. I don't know if she has anything further to say on my behalf anyway.
I was just looking for the Special Gen... When we actually did that, and I'm not finding it. But, I know it was approved and I believe it's still out there, but again, that has been elusive. That documentation's always been elusive to me. But, I'll keep looking and if I find something, I'll bring it down.
Thanks, Judy.
What's the process for moving forward at this time? I mean, if we want to make sure the funding... Where the funding's coming from? Because I think we're at a point where this is... We're going to have to do this, one way or the other. It's just how to fund... Where the funding's coming from.
I realize that, but right now, the Special General is kind of... We're not sure where it is, because I have not seen an updated list of what's actually committed and what's already spent. And I think we need that.
Well, we saw that...
I think we do need to see that where it is and...
We saw that at a finance meeting, but it was not accurate at that time.
That's correct. And that's what we were working on, getting that up-to-date, because there's... It hasn't... It hadn't looked to me as though it had been updated for quite some time.
No. I think we need to take a good look at that before we make some of these big purchases.
Is this time-sensitive?
I guess I'd like to bring it forward at the next meeting if that's possible.
Yes.
No, absolutely.
Yes, we have... We'll have time to think about it.
I'm just thinking the quotes for this week, but I think it... I mean, it's something that's unfortunate. And we talked about, we're going to have to budget these cameras and recording stuff in our... It's... This will take us... This is a five-year... This is a five-year guaranteed. I mean, so there's no... Because this... So, we could actually, I think Sheriff Flanders stated this in the meeting, we could do this annually also. We could pay this fee annually if you wanted to do it that way.
Sheriff brought that up yesterday, that it could be spread out to a little bit, but...
I think what I'd like to see is, if not Special General Fund, then where? You know, for the next... The next meeting, if we don't have it earmarked.
I think we could... You know, another option would be do Special General Fund for the first... I mean, if you want to buy it down and then make the payment annually in years four and five.
We'll want to make sure that we spend down our public safety funds, because those have to be spent by end of June, by July 1 of next year. So, we would want to make sure that that gets spent.
And we have about $946,000 to spend.
Just to add to that, if...
That's earmarked.
Things are approved today, that number goes to... Where's that here?
$190,000.
$129,092. If it's... Yeah, if the rest of this goes through or not, so. That number's dependent on what's approved.
Let's... Let me think here.
What's the... What's the toll again? 1, 6, 1, 0, 6?
This?
Yeah. I suppose I could look on there.
Yeah.
The commissioners, there will be some cameras that will be designated at the jail also, which will definitely be a benefit.
Can we table items one and two until our next meeting? Just to make sure.
Well, two should be out of the... Out of those funds for public safety. It wouldn't be out of that general...
It's a Special General.
Special General Fund, so.
Yeah, it would be just the public safety, the 996.
Okay.
I think we need some little more financial...
Mr. Chair, make a motion to table the body-worn cameras until our next meeting.
Motion by Barry. Second.
I'll second.
Second by Erica, to table.
And the reason for table... The reason for tabling would for find out... For the funding opportunity, sir?
Just a point of discussion, if we... If we find out there isn't money in the Special General or enough, the 639 or whatever roughly that you're... That would take care of three years of the contract. So, then in three years, if we absolutely had to, we could budget.
And it's an item that I think that we're going to have to put in our budget...
Yes.
Ongoing anyway.
After that anyway, so.
That's where a capital improvement plan would be great.
Yeah.
That would be the thing to have, and then we'd be... That's why we should have had that. We should have it, because then we'd be able... We'd be ready for it.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie. Item two.
Item number two is a request to purchase a side-by-side utility vehicle. This is an extended cab vehicle. Again, this would be using our public safety funds with a low quote being $33,844.97. And we did get three quotes on that, and that number is low.
Wishes of the board.
Well, this was something that I questioned the need for. We went through committee and expressed where those... Where it would be applicable, and I think it's... I think it's a good tool to have. Certain... Certainly, I can support it. Like, I'm... They are... Today's utility vehicles are today... What you get around, and then at some point, well, I won't go into other details on...
Yeah, I agree with Barry. I support it also because of the... There's a need.
Got a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of this side-by-side through the public safety funds.
The low quote?
With the low quota.
Motion by Dave, second by Barry. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
Thank you. Item number three is a... It's a renewal for a joint powers agreement with the BCA. It's our anti-heroin task force grant. It's for overtime reimbursement with any cases with a tribal or reservation nexus.
Motion to accept or approve? Approve? I think it's approve. Accept or approve?
We're accepting the grant.
Okay.
Yes.
Motion to accept?
I'll second.
By Barry, second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Thank you. Item number four, we are requesting a new deputy position. 30% of this, when I made this proposal, would have come out of that legislative funds, the public safety funds, 30% of this cost. And I believe you have a cost analysis for that along with a corrections officer in front of you. This is in the 2025 budget with a 30% being used. We are planning to use this deputy to assist with federal inmate transports, possibly a new DARE position, and working with schools along with regular assigned deputy duties. This deputy would not start until January 1st of '25.
Mr. Chair, the... These two positions are kind of tied together. Well, the funding for one... For the jailer and the... Or the new correction officer and the new deputy are tied to the state or the federal contract with inmates. We are going to be requesting, and this is a big driver on the... On both of these, for a new... For an increase in those fees. Currently are at 70...
72.
72. We anticipate a minimum of $90 per day?
85 to 90.
But, so with that extra... The officer will do transports for federal inmates, and it takes two, so you have to have two people. But, there are places that are doing extensive transports for inmates, and they're up to $110 a day. So, if we can... If you do our budget, you look at the 20, and if we can increase our inmates of 20 through that, our... You know, if we could do that, and this increase came in, we'd be... I mean, we were way over budget to finance this. But, if you don't... But if you don't, and you can't ever expect the high end and the, and the maximum all the time, would not fund these. The, the other thing with the correct, as we move forward into the correction officer, that will be through attrition eliminating a part-time position, because you're, you're trying to cover the hours. So the way I look at it, you're really, it's really gonna cost you something, but not what the full time, because you're eliminating overtime hours, and you're eliminating a part-time person through attrition. But the hours are, we're at the minimum hours now, I mean, for the state contract, so. That's what sold me on these two positions is the, the funding opportunity, the increased funding opportunities to move forward.
By adding the jailer, that will allow us to house more federal prisoners, which will increase. And even if that number stays the same at seventy-two, that's still gonna increase the revenue enough. And then, like Barry said, the, the overtime will be go down in the part-time employee.
The correction officer is a, I think is a.
Is a.
Is an absolute need.
Is a need.
Because we, and it's not gonna.
It's a neutral.
I don't think it's gonna be a cash.
No.
I mean, we'll probably pay ben, more benefits in, but that's, hours have to be there, so.
I can see the correctional officer now, but the deputy have a issue with till we get our budget more finalized. You know, we're, we're still very high. And even is there guarantee on federal, more federal prisoners, if you got a commitment from them, and there's.
It's all, it's all dependent on what we can do for them as well.
Yeah.
We, we've talked that same route, to say, can we get that raised before we commit, and, and they like to see the commitment, you know, it's, it's, it's a, we've struggled with that same exact thing, where, can, what can we expect, and, and you can't, you're not, it's not a negotiation, you show them what you're doing and what you have, and the intent, so.
This, this position is also in the budget with thirty percent being paid by the public safety fund. Just for, just to show you numbers, right now, we are down twenty-nine percent for the year with our part-time correctional officers, which is roughly two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that we're down, that we have not used in that line item. And that's because most of our part-time people have other jobs. They're not available. We're not using these hours. Hence, we have full-time people that have to pick up these hours, which is overtime. We have, we have to have minimal staffing for our jail. There's, if somebody's sick, we have to replace that person. Vacation, you know, whatever the need is. Again, like Commissioner Nelson said, in order for us to do a transport, whether it be to the, the dentist, doctor, whatever the need may be, just locally, it requires two licensed officers. What the, the marshals would like to see is us being able to take inmates to and from court hearings at Fargo. Again, requires two licensed officers. Right now, we're pulling those deputies off the road to accommodate those, those needs.
If you want to look at the numbers of deputies per capita, I think Shane has those readily available to show you that we're on the low end of every, of every, every graph that you look at, so.
We're in the bottom seven percent of the staffing for sheriff's offices in the state.
And we are one of the busiest counties in the state for deputy.
So I mean, I, I, I respect that, I respect that, because I, I was the same.
Yeah, I, I, I can support the, today I can support the jailer. I just don't think the deputy, till we can get a little better handle on our proposed levy.
And this thirty percent of the salary will be paid from public safety funds, that's just.
One year.
One year.
One year.
Right, so.
To me, it's, it's kind of a, a safety valve, but I still think, obviously we can't know, but I still think that the housing of federal prisoners is going to, in the increase in the amount of money per prisoner, and the jailer will increase the number of prisoners will cover.
Mr. Chair, I think maybe what we could do is, if we tabled the new deputies, so Shane could get, bring you the data to show, you know, to help explain the need, the calls for service, the, the, where we are for officers per capita, that, you know, compared to others. I think we could look at that again at our next meeting, or, and then.
Yeah, I, I've seen a lot of that, but I, I still, the bottom line is, where's the, all the funding gonna come for? Not only for the individual, but the equipment and all that, so. I guess I raised some of those concerns, yes, asking finance and.
Can I, can I? Go ahead.
One second. The, the plan was to use, with that equipment list we got to you, the plan was to use these public safety funds for that also, to include, I think in there was a car, a squad car for next year, which we have right here, and to outfit that squad car.
Then we got two separate resolutions, which probably act on one at a time.
Yeah, for the, we've, we've discussed both of them. I will, I will go with the new correction officer first, one H. I'll make a motion to approve ten twenty-four one H for the new correction officer.
I'll second that.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave on resolution one H. Further discussion? Hearing none, call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carry.
Mr. Chair, can I add a side note? You'd asked for a cost on equipping that. Apparently I did a nice spreadsheet, explained it all, put it in a draft, and didn't hit send, so I apologize for that. I do have.
You're gonna do that.
I, I have. I looked, and I couldn't find it in my sent, so I've got it. Do you want those numbers before you discuss any further? Do you want me to just send that later on, or how would you like that? I, I've got them here if you want to hear them, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, maybe I would, I think that the full board should see the numbers of, of where everyone is on statewide for, for deputies. I mean, to show where we are. I think that might help the board with the decision.
And I think this ties into our special, general, and all this. Where, where are we sitting right now?
The other.
I would also like to see some dollar amounts for potential. I mean, I know we can't get the commitment from, you know, for the federal prisoners, but like, what, what is the potential for an increase, and what could that revenue be? I don't know, do we have it?
And we look, yes, we do, because we looked at it, we, we threw numbers around and shown what, what that would be, but, so if the, the current price compared to the inmates, through the new price comparing to the potential inmates, what we're currently staffing, or what we're currently getting for how many inmates we have, I think that would be useful to say, to show how this can be.
I, I have that too.
I know, but if, it takes us time to, to really look through, we can't, I mean, like, today when Cody presented. I, we as.
We as a committee have.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, like, like Cody gives out the information today, it's hard to make a decision when you're just given the information, and, and you don't have time to really look through it, so. I don't have a problem looking at the, tabling, make a motion to table one G till our next meeting, the new deputy.
I'll second.
And just to be clear, what you need, you'll be looking for those, like, the analysis of the number of deputies versus our population.
Calls for service.
For the federal boarding.
And call, I mean, and calls to.
Calls for service.
Busyness of the county.
That might take me a little bit longer. I haven't updated those numbers since twenty.
Yeah.
Well, we don't, I mean, I don't want you to do it, I mean, I don't, I don't know that you need to go specific between violent, non-violent, I mean, I, just, just at all.
That's generally calling around to different agencies to get their number, so.
Yeah.
I, I've, I've got a spreadsheet that I did a number of years ago, I can look at updating that.
And then, oh, good. And then also to the cost, the, what, how much we anticipate would be, how many prisoners we can house with the new jailer, how much money will that generate at our current rate, how much the difference of what rate we would easily get? And if we added the deputy, and we're saying we're gonna transport, I, we think it's gonna be the minimum of ninety prisoners.
The other thing, the other information, and I think this would be up, Mary or Carrie, the finances of the other, you know, not just the special general, but the opioid, I mean, is the opioid settlement, what, what can be spent on that, and where, what funds do we have? And then there's a couple other smaller ones that, that we have some, still some funds of it. I think, I think the board will want to see that full picture on all those funds. I just, I mean, just recently heard a opioid advertisement for proposals to, to spend money on, but maybe some of the sheriff's equipment could be reimbursed from that also.
That we, you'd have to apply, you know, you'd have to apply for the grant through, and then there's a quest for proposal for it. Like, our public health applied for the opioid grant last year, so the sheriff's department would have to essentially apply for those grants.
And who's managing those, the opioid grants?
The committee, the opioid committee.
Becker County Opioid Committee?
Yeah, but, but there's, there's more than just.
Okay.
More than just Becker County employees, there's a.
We got a motion in a second, table it for the next meeting, if we can get all the finance information compiled by then, report.
Just, we could dissolve that committee, couldn't we?
What I'm saying is, there's a process for it, Barry. We'd have to follow the process.
I'll call a question, all in favor for tabling?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Carry. And before I move on to the last item, I just wanna get a, a note out to our jail staff. Last year, we brought in two hundred twenty-four thousand in revenue for boarding inmates. Up to, through nine months, we've already invoiced two hundred thirteen thousand. So we are on board to bring in quite a bit more than last year, so, thanks to the staff for their hard work. Item number six is our twenty twenty-five towards zero death enforcement grant agreement. This, again, is a renewal. We are down, however, ten thousand from last year, last year, or this year was thirty-four thousand, for twenty twenty-five, it'll be twenty-four thousand one fifty.
This is to accept the grant?
To accept, yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the TZD grant.
I'll second.
Second by Erica, to accept the TZD grant. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Plenty of paper, ain't there?
Yeah, I don't know.
This is my second copy. Somehow I must add it on my packet. Yesterday I told him, and I didn't get it. Piggy saved it. That's, that's why I let her take a break.
I don't know that we officially adjourned, we didn't adjourn.
Where adjourned?
I apologize. I'll go hit send on that email.